Livingston County, Michigan, USA.
Okay. That completes the roll call.
Alrighty, thank you Keith. Next up, item four would be approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom, second from a remote user Keith Boyd. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion carries. Next up is approval of our planning commission's special meeting minutes from January 7th, 2021.
I make a motion to approve those.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Boyd, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes to those meeting minutes? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion carries. Next up, item five, planning, approval of our planning commission regular meeting minutes from January 14, 2021.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 14, 2021.
Support.
Alright, we're going to go with a motion to approve those minutes from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner LaRose. Any changes to those meeting minutes? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion carries. Next up is call to the public. I'm not sure, we had a couple visitors here online with us this evening. If you are here to speak or comment on item number seven A, which is a public hearing on the future land use map and comprehensive plan, hold your comments until item seven A is up on the table. We will have an opportunity for you to speak at that time. So I guess if there is anything anyone would like to address or state to the planning commission this evening, besides topic seven A, now would be your time. And I see everybody's mic is turned off on a guest, so. I'm going to assume no call to the, no comment during call to the public and we'll move right on to item seven A, which is a public hearing. And the way we conduct a public hearing in Heartland Township is in a moment, I will open the public hearing. We'll then turn the internet, the floor of your computer over to our planning director who will introduce the project to us. And then we will open the public comment portion. That is the point at which we'll invite anybody in the audience to step forward. We do have a couple written comments that will enter at that point. We'll then close the public hearing. And then the planning commission and the planning director will review the staff report related to the specific topic. So with that being said, I am going to open the public hearing this evening at 7:05 PM for the applicant, Heartland Township. The township is requesting to amend the future land use map and the comprehensive plan of Heartland Township. For the record, all the public notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. And with that, what I would like to do is turn this over to our planning director, Troy Langard.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? So this amendment actually goes back a couple of years. The township had been approached by an apartment complex management company to do a mixed use project right in our commercial core area. At that time, the general comments, and I'm very general in how we summarized it was that there was some interest in it, but maybe there was concern with giving up that much commercial. And it caused the township to really examine and reflect on where is the retail and restaurant market going? What's going on? Is the township's comprehensive plan and future land use plan really accurate? And the township board then commissioned a study. We brought in Bob Gibbs Planning Group to study and evaluate the retail and restaurant market in Heartland Township. And that study was completed in 2019. If I got the Nate date right. And shortly after that, what the planning commission began to do was to evaluate some of its commercial areas as well as some of its multifamily areas. The, the goal was to try to locate a multifamily in an area where you can create walkability in a mixed use, walkable environment. The township has some projects that are before it right now that would lend itself in that direction. The goal was to reduce the number of multifamily designated areas on, on the future land use map in certain areas, as well as accommodate some mixed use in other areas that currently wouldn't allow it. And so it's been a few years off and on that the planning commission's evaluated and looked at several areas. Ultimately got reduced down to six areas are proposed for amendments, and those are here for you tonight to kind of look at.
Okay. Any?
Well, that's just a general overview.
Alright, that's. So now what we would like to do is go to the public comment section of this particular application. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to make any statements or comments in regards to the actual proposal itself? Please note that it is our practice to take notes during your comments. We won't be responding and getting in a conversation back and forth, but we'll do our best to get those answered during the meeting while you're still online here this evening. If there's something we can't get an answer to, we will get it and someone will get back with you. So with that, I'll open the, the internet up here to anybody that would like to address the planning commission on this topic. Anyone? Everyone's mics are turned off, so I hope they're hearing me. I think they are. Anyone? Okay. I think what we will do at this time is not close the public comment, but enter into the record two written communications that the township, the planning commission received. And I guess what I'll do is I'll introduce them, then I'd like to toss it to Troy to maybe give a little explanation. The first one that we received is from a property owner, Andy Giovinetti. This is an email that the township received on Monday, January 25th, 2021. And he's talking about proposed language for the special planning area of M59 Fenton and Pleasant Valley Road. Troy, can you speak to this particular email so everybody is familiar with its content and what Mr. Giovinetti is asking?
I sure can. Mr. Giovinetti is referencing the only existing special planning area that currently exists in our future land use map. And that is not one of the areas we are targeting for an amendment tonight. However, in 2011, there was an amendment that was approved by the township. And that amendment included some language for a special planning area that simply noted the density. And then it also noted that essentially a planned development could be permitted, bonus density. It didn't give any specifics as to what that bonus might be or any standards of that. In 2015, the township approved an amendment to the comprehensive plan. And for reasons unbeknownst to me, language was removed. Mr. Giovinetti is simply asking that it be put back in. I certainly don't see any harm in putting it back in.
Okay, any, okay, let me, let me put the second one out there since we generally don't discuss during the public portion. The second item that we received in writing was a letter from a Mr. Glenn Wilkinson is his name, I believe. And this was received on Thursday, January 28th, 2021, so today. And Mr. Wilkinson's email generally is referring to questions about bonus density for special planning areas. And how is, I guess I'll turn it over to you Troy. What, what specifically is he asking about?
So with respect to the amendments we have before us, I've already mentioned there's one existing special planning area. Some of the amendments we have are to add two more special planning areas. And for that, the language from the 2011 amendment was somewhat incorporated that included that bonus density language. His question is about how is that bonus density, and I'm summarizing it, I'm not quoting it verbatim. He's summarized how is that bonus density calculated? How is it determined? He's somewhat questioning maybe some language could be put into the comprehensive plan to that effect. That bonus density is outlined, the standards are outlined in our zoning ordinance in the plan development section in our zoning ordinance, section 3.1.18, which outlines how an applicant could achieve a bonus for their development. There's a number of standards. It goes on for a couple pages. I won't get into it too much, but those standards exist. I'd be more than happy to talk with Mr. Wilkinson about that if there's anything in particular that he'd like to add or clarify or include for a zoning ordinance amendment. But generally, you don't have those standards in a comprehensive development plan. You just outline very generally what might occur there.
Okay, I guess I'll give one last call. Is there anybody in the, in the public, anybody here with us that would like to make any statements or comments in regards to the amendment tonight? Mics are still off, so I am going to close the public hearing now at 7:14 PM. And at this point, what we're going to do, and it's typical in a public hearing within Heartland Township and other communities, we follow guidelines that we've been, that we've been given that many communities use, is we will take a look at the staff report that we all have. It is dated January 2021. And I think the best way to go through this, the planning commission has been through this numerous occasions, and I think the public would get the best benefit if we were to just talk specifically about one area at a time. And if we take that staff review letter and move on to packet page nine. Oops, sorry here. I gotta get it. So we'll start right on packet page seven. That's area one. I apologize. The highlighter missed the mark. On the first page down at the bottom, area one, south of Clyde Road, east of US 23. Troy, would you like to take us through this specific area?
So this area, I hope you have a future land use map with the amendments on it. If not, Andrew, can, maybe you bring that up? And I'll try to briefly describe where this area is. This area is on, south of Clyde Road, east of US 23. This is, I think it's three parcels, approximately 137.95 acres. That is currently in a multifamily residential, future land use category. This area was targeted to be changed to low suburban density residential, which is the land use that surrounds it on three sides. The reason that this area was targeted is after several conversations with apartment management companies, they've indicated that their apartments in general prefer to be on water and sewer. Also, they need, they're generally want to be near commercial activity, restaurants and retail. Certainly, there's a strong desire to be near any kind of walkability. So generally apartments have desire to have something close to restaurants, retail, some kind of general core commercial development. This area up in area one is nowhere near any of that. It does not have water available to it. And the other item that came up was the 2014 residential market analysis that was done that indicated how many apartment units the township could support. And if you look at some of the developments that we've got or had, we would exceed that amount. And this 138 acres would, it would maybe make it possible to develop, would saturate the apartment market. So this area was targeted to revert back to a single family category.
Okay.
Looks like we're having trouble sharing that map. So maybe Andrew, you could just abandon that and we can go back to the screen so we can see everyone. Sorry about that.
That's alright. So does the, any on the planning commission have a question or comment from, or for Troy at this point about the planning, or the area number one that he just discussed? For the public's benefit, we have been through this at the planning commission and numerous public meetings. So if there isn't a lot of conversation on a lot of this, we have covered this through, as Troy has mentioned, we've been working on this for quite some time. So any additional comments from the planning commission for area one?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment or question. It seems like the multifamily designation provides a good buffer between the planned industrial and the estate residential. The one thing that came to mind in switching this was if, if it gets developed as the urban low density before anything else adjacent gets developed as planned industrial, if, once those industrial type developments come in, if that's potentially going to drive those home values down too much or cause an issue from that perspective. So I understand the concerns with that being multifamily, but I was just kind of thinking from that perspective. I've seen situations where developments come in and the neighboring property suddenly causes issues for them. Because when they're first developed, they think, you know, this is just vacant land next to me. And then it might drive the value down later for those properties. So I was just curious if that's been considered.
I can comment a little bit on that. So this is the map. I don't know if that helps to see, and area one is, is in this, this area here. And you could see the research and development that member LaRose was talking about. You can also see that already on three sides of this, it is the low density suburban that exists. And certainly there, anytime you've got uses that, such as research and development, light industrial up against a single family, you do have that potential for land uses that, about each other, that there could be some conflict. And generally, a buffer is oftentimes a good idea. And certainly that's something that could be talked about when the entire master plan is updated. And the, the goal there is in, after the census is completed. But the, the primary concern is oversaturation of multifamily that we are going to possibly exceed the number of units that the residential market analysis indicated it within lands we already have.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to comment from Michelle, but I wanted to say that I believe that area now is research and development and light industrial. And we are currently looking at only light industrial, partially for that reason. Plus we moved industrial down south of 59. So if that kind of helps, I think the neighbors would rather have research and development. They could put up with that as opposed to heavy industrial. That's all I had.
Any other further comments on that? Okay, I think we'll move on to area two then. This is at the southwest corner of M59 and old US 23. Troy, I'd like to turn it back to you.
So this area is at the southwest corner of old US 23 and south of M59. The current future land use designation for this is commercial. And I've already talked about this particular property. We had a development proposal that was a mixed use of apartments as well as some commercial. And although that project didn't go forward, I am in discussions with one of the property owners on that about doing a mixed use. So there's tremendous interest on this property and doing mixed use. The current future land use designation, the commercial, does not allow for any residential at all. And in order to facilitate and promote what we've learned from the retail market analysis about walkability, this area was targeted as an area to create as a special planning area with the intent of creating a walkable mixed use development. And again, the, the specific standards would be left up to the zoning ordinance and then reviewed by the planning commission and the township board. But this was a, an area that was targeted to promote walkable mixed use type of development.
Any questions, comments for Troy on that from the planning commission? Okay, seeing or hearing none here, I'm going to suggest that we are going to move to area number three, which is east of Heartland Road, south of Dunham Road. And this is on your packet page, starts on packet page 10 for those following. Troy?
So this area is made up of many separate parcels. It's about just under 60 acres. Andrew, if you could go down, you're showing area one right there. If you could just move that down, like straight down a little bit. Keep going down. Keep going down. Right there, right there. So area three, yep, right there is perfect, is one in the center. It is south of Dunham Road. It's also just east of US 23. There are numerous parcels there that range from, or maybe an acre to about 10 acres. I've, I've included all of the parcels and their acreage in the staff report. This area was targeted to change from multifamily to medium suburban density residential, which is a single family category that somewhat surrounds that or is, is near that. The reason this one was targeted is it is highly unlikely that this area would be developed as a multifamily development project. Instead, what you're more likely to get is each or one of those property owners requesting to rezone their property to multifamily, which would likely not sit well with any of those other neighbors in that development. So the simple amassing of all of these parcels to create one development just seemed unlikely. And it was probably more conducive to allow the single family to remain and establish a future land use designation to promote what we already have there.
Okay, any questions for Troy on area number three?
Mr. Chairman, I did have one point of clarification. In, in your report, Troy, it actually, it lists that these are all on the east side of Heartland Road. But are there a couple of properties actually, there were a couple, I think, on the west side, or do they just cross?
Yeah, it's, again, that's just a general description. There's like two parcels that would be on the other side of Heartland Road.
I thought this thing, it was a little bit hard to tell from the map, but I thought it looked like it included them. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Alright, let's move up and on packet page 12. And this would be area number four, described as north of M59, west Clark Road. So just south of the township hall.
Yes. Troy? So, yep, this area is just on the west side of Clark Road. It's about 23 acres. We actually had a concept proposal on this not too long ago. Well, I guess it's been over a year now. It's funny how this year's kind of flown by. For a single family, somewhat dense, single family development. If you recall, this property has a huge wetland on it that really limits or inhibits the development and really causes the development to be on the east side of this property. As part of our review of the master plan amendment or the comprehensive development plan and future land use map amendment, this was decided that changing the land designation to medium urban density, which would match the subdivision directly across from Clark Road, which would allow the density of a, of a project that we had seen and may even allow a little bit more density, but would probably be a better fit for those single family homes directly across from Clark Road versus a multifamily project in this location.
Okay, any questions for Troy on area number four? I'm only seeing some of you, but I'm hearing none of you, so I'm going to go ahead and move on. Area number five would be described as the Heartland Glen Golf Course. Troy?
This is a big area. It's just under 400 acres, I think 385 acres. This is a property that where a portion of this is already, has a concept plan that has gone before the planning commission and the township board for an apartment complex. This is also a development that is part of a water extension project to serve the eastern portion of the township. With the advancement of municipal water coming down here and the interest of an apartment complex, the goal here to create a walkable community was to establish a, I guess, a third special planning area that would allow some flexibility for the planning commission and the township board in reviewing a plan development to look at unique, mixed, well, more residential based development here. There's a number of water features on this property. It would be desirable to preserve those. So this particular special planning area had a little bit of a different density provision built into it. It allowed up to 25% more density in the northern portion, provided that the southern portion were reduced by 25%. The philosophy being that the southern portion abuts largely more rural lots, whereas the northern portion either abuts M59 or more dense development. The goal is that the overall density would be no greater than any other plan development in the township. And the goal is to also preserve the water features and natural features on this property. And the planned development, special planning area was viewed as the best way to do that.
Okay, any questions for Troy on area number? Any questions for Troy on area number? Okay, I'm on packet page number 14. And our final area to review here is area number six, defined just as south of M59. Troy, we'll turn it over to you.
So this area is south of M59. It is also east of Pleasant Valley Road, so it is across from our only special planning area right now. Similar to what we outlined for area three, this property is several individual properties, would be very difficult to amass all of them together to do a project for multifamily. So the walkability of it being across M59 and seems to be less possible at this point. Maybe that could change. But at least at this point, this was a targeted area to remove from multifamily and to change it to, oh, what category there, low suburban density residential, which would match what is adjacent to it. It certainly would promote those existing single family homes that are there.
Any questions for Troy on this?
I do. This is Sue. I guess I just, you know, look at it, I was kind of bounded, especially fronting on M59, looking at the different sizes of the lots. And I, I just wondered if the low suburban density is the right fit since to the east of it is, isn't that manufactured housing park? And if it made more sense to be a little more dense, such as like medium suburban residential. I know we probably talked about it, but I lost my notes on this. It just feels like maybe it should be a little more dense.
Troy?
Well, I mean, that's certainly up for discussion. I certainly don't want to eliminate any of that conversation or discussion or those thoughts. At the time we picked the, of the, of the single family that abuts it, we had picked the most dense one for that, but I'm certainly amenable to listen to the planning commission and their thoughts on a different single family category. I think that's a fair question and, and should be, should, should be discussed if you so desire to do so.
Troy, what is the, what is the difference between the two? Do you have that handy for those are at home listening? Or if a planning commissioner does not have the comprehensive plan in front of them?
Yeah. So the low suburban density residential is basically one acre to two acre lots.
Is that what is direct on the north side of M59 of this property?
Yes. Yep. Then south of it is the estate residential, which is two acre lots. So the low density would allow a little bit more dense. The, the one that Commissioner Grissom had mentioned is the medium, was it suburban or urban?
Suburban.
Suburban. So that would allow half acre to an acre lots. And there is land that would be south of the special planning area that would be in the category Commissioner Grissom. So if you wanted to see where, how close or how far existing land is, it would be just south of the special planning on Pleasant Valley. So when you get to half an acre, so you're talking well and septic. Just generally, and I'm, I really am not a health department official, but just generally, and it's not so much the well, it's more the septic, a half an acre is getting, getting close to being questionable. I'll just say that.
In regards to the size of the property, fitting a septic and servicing the property?
Yeah, you generally need to have, well, you do need to have two sites. They're often right next to each other, but they, when you got a half an acre, you're, I can't say it's impossible, but you're.
Well, and the well, the wellhead has to be, I think, 100 feet from the field.
Well, I've seen, I've seen wells or just single family. I'm just talking, we're just talking one house.
Yes.
Are very close to the house. And the house would be in what would you would call the clear zone area. So I don't know.
You can put them close to the house. You just can't put them close to your septic field.
Well, yeah. Yeah. I see what you're talking about. Yes.
Yeah.
Any more thoughts on that? I don't recall the specific details of the conversation either, Sue.
Yeah.
I just know we've.
Yeah. I know it's just a lot more dense to the east, but I think they have their own like lagoon system or something, if I remember correctly, for their septic. And now we know, you know, potentially what's coming to the west across Pleasant Valley. It just felt like, gosh, this is going to be a tough fit. One of the lots is just 0.4 acres. I was just, just trying to recall. But I certainly don't want to cause stress and harm to our environment, you know, pushing it either, so.
What would you like to do with that particular area? Any input from anyone?
Yeah, Larry, we have a lot of conversation about this particular parcel. And, and I really feel comfortable in, in having it low suburban density. I, I think it's the best, best fit for that particular area.
Okay. Anyone have input?
I'm comfortable with that, too, Mike and Larry.
Okay. I can't see anybody else in here, right? So any other input?
And I'm fine with it, too. I just, just I had forgotten our conversations. I know we had many and it just kind of stuck out at me, so I appreciate everybody's input.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions for Troy on this particular application? Does the planning commission wish to act on this this evening? If you do, on the page one of the staff report dated January 2021, there is a recommended motion to send this on to the board.
Larry?
Yeah.
In the approval, it says recommended approval of the amendments to the future land use plan and comprehensive development plan. And then there's language to that. So if we do this approval, is that also approving the new language?
Troy?
No, I would ask if you want to add, and I, I support adding the language that Andy Giovinetti had requested. I would just ask that you reference his email to add the language that it basically is coming from the 2011 amendment that was done. So that motion you have before you would not include his request, which I certainly would support adding that language in. We never talked about any of that stuff in all of our discussion and he probably raised a good point. We could certainly add that in.
Okay. If you're so inclined this evening, if not, we can bring this back at a future date. What's the planning commission's pleasure?
If you, if you want, on the, our next meeting on the 11th, we have posted an ordinance amendment for drive-through restaurants. I am not envisioning that would be a lengthy meeting. If you want, I can correct the language and we can discuss it again at our February 11th meeting. Or if you want, make a motion slightly amending that to include the language Mr. Giovinetti had proposed.
Troy, can you quick review what we decided to do with Lynn Wilkinson's comment?
Well, we didn't, we didn't decide anything. I just outlined that he's got questions about how that bonus density is calculated and should we put standards in the comprehensive development plan to that effect. I've just pointed out those standards already exist in the zoning ordinance in the plan development. I'm just, I just talked about that. We didn't actually do anything to that, though.
Oh, you answered my question. I remember that now. I recommend the approval of the amendments for the future land use map, comprehensive development plan is outlined in its memorandum dated January 20th, 2021. It's outlined in the attachments, including the email from Andy Giovinetti dated whatever date it is there, Troy.
January 25th.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll support the motion.
Motion to recommend approval of this evening's agenda item, 2020, 2021 amendment of the future land use map, comprehensive plan from Commissioner Voight, a second from Commissioner LaRose. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Aye? Pos nay? Hearing being none, the motion carries. We will move on to item eight. This is a second call to the public for the evening's meeting. Is anyone out there that would like to address the planning commission? I see mics turned off, but I'll wait for a moment. Okay, we will close. I will close our call to the public and we'll move to item nine, planners' report. Troy?
Planners' report, just a couple of things. One, if you're interested in doing any training, if you see anything, I know all of you get some emails and, and information sent to you. If you've got questions, let me know. I have talked to one of you about doing that and I have sent some information out to our newest member, but if you have anything that you're interested in, let me know. I will probably try to send out some just general background information about planning. I don't want to overload or inundate anyone, but I also have some documents I can send out. And if you ever have any questions, just let me know.
Okay. Item 10, committee reports, comments. Anybody have anything this evening? If not?
Oh, I, I would, if I could add something there. So the ordinance review committee, this has been a, an odd year, but the ordinance review committee is going to be taking up the landscape ordinance amendment. That's been in the works for a while and we've had some help on that and we're hopefully going to be discussing that here in the near future.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you. So I'll go, item 10, committee reports again, one last time, anyone? All right, we'll close that. And item 11 would be a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner LaRose. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos nay, motion carries. Everyone have a good night. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yep. Hey, Troy, can you hang on for a minute?
Yeah, I'll hang on.
I got your call. I just wanted to follow up. I didn't get a chance to call you back yet.